Just like an extra trim piece over there.
Oh, she did not tell me. That's interesting because she never brings us cookies at the office, so that's interesting.
She wants maybe two come in.
Like three weeks.
Really?
Yep.
I didn't know you were so close.
Yep. Where, uh, Lizzie's actually taking over my meeting starting next week. I will be done going for probably until December.
So like, Fenton, all those fun places?
Yep.
Yeah. Well, I'm excited for you guys.
It's gonna be super fun. My wife is just super nervous about, okay, so we already have a child that has to go through the night routine and like, what do I do now with the babies? And we understand that the ability to commit and stay home given that profession is a limited duration. She's just worried. I think that's what she's worried about.
She's a therapist, isn't she?
Yes.
Okay. I thought she, I couldn't remember exactly what.
We joke all the time.
I just noticed that.
I've come to learn that we're all mechanics. I have the last ones to be worked on, so I have to take therapy the same way.
She does a great job.
Do you ever feel like she's like, sexualizing?
No, she's pretty.
Yeah, no, she's pretty. She's got so much of the, more like her beauty.
I wonder when she's, why? That would be me. That would totally be me. She'll be like, what are you talking about?
Give me a lift and I'll figure it out.
I love it. Your children are the ones that are in real trouble because she'll probably be, you know, 10 steps ahead of them someday.
Sheri, you ready to go? Okay, Al, you ready to go?
That's me. Stop pulling the tail. It should be him.
All right, good evening. We are going to call the regular meeting of the Bath Charter Township Board of Trustees to order here for Monday, October 7th. If you're just joining us, we have had a special meeting talking about the fiscal year 25 budget. We'll have one more of those in the future. Why don't we get us started today with a roll call?
Mr. Fields Bliss?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Chandler here, Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Hagerman?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, next up on the agenda, and I assume there's some agendas on the lectern if folks want to follow along in the audience, is civic reflection. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance and end with a moment of silence. So if you stand, if you are able to join us in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now a moment of silence. Thank you. Item number three on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have not heard, oh, I spoke too soon. Sheri, you have an adjustment?
I apologize that I didn't call and put it on the agenda that I have a letter from the Senior Services Advisory Board that was written very well by Deb Johnson and I was instructed to read it and I didn't get it on the agenda. So I'd like to add that.
Where would you like to add that? Could we put it under committee reports?
Wherever you'd like.
Does that work if we put it under committee reports? Does that work with everybody?
Okay.
Number 11.
Number 12?
Uh, right there.
Oh, committee reports.
Committee reports, okay, 12, yep.
Letter from SSAB. Great. Anything else, Sheri?
Nope.
All right, Karen?
Um, I would like to point out that, uh, under new business, large A, introduction of first reading of ordinance 2013, it indicates introduction of first reading, but I don't think that it's ready for first reading. I would like the police chief to go ahead and explain it to you tonight and then take action on it at the next meeting.
So just introduction?
Correct.
Okay. Great. Other changes, additions, abstractions? All right, if not, we're looking for a motion to approve the agenda with those two edits, if you are interested.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes, um, the two edits within it.
Second.
Go get there, Jennifer.
Sorry.
All right, a motion and a second around approval of the agenda with these two changes discussed. Is there any other discussion or comments? All right, we're gonna do a voice vote on this. All those in favor of approving the agenda with the aforementioned edits, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have an amended agenda. Uh, number four is disclosure of conflicts of interest. So board members have any conflicts they want to put on the record before we jump into the content tonight. All right, hearing none, we'll move on to item five. Item five is public statement one. This is limited to three minutes on items that are on the agenda tonight. There is a second public statement opportunity at the end of the meeting where folks will have an additional three minutes to talk on any topic they so desire. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to use their three minutes at this point to talk about what's on the agenda tonight? All right. We'll keep moving then. That brings us to item six, items from county, state, federal, and other agencies. I know we have Doug here from the Road Commission. I also see Commissioner Washington as well.
All right, good evening. Thanks again for, um, you know, having me out. It's been crazy that it's been a year already, so. Again, my name's Doug Stefan, Managing Director for the Road Commission. I really just wanna kind of give an overview of the year that we had. We had another exceptional year construction-wise. If we probably didn't impact your commute in some way, I apologize for that. Maybe we can do better next year. But we had a lot of work out there and a lot of roads. We did about 65 miles of chip seal this year. I had another 15, almost closer to 17 miles of actual just overlay paving, things like that. Some of that was in Bath Township. Um, and we look to have a similar program again next year, so we're not, we're taking advantage of all the state, federal dollars that we can get and we're maximizing that on our roads, so, um, we're happy about our program for next year. And once we get those numbers final, I will send you guys a map for the 2025 projects. Usually around November, we have those pretty much, um, ready to go to share with townships. Uh, the Webster Road project is on track for 2025 construction. We are still hoping that we can get a little bit of sidewalk work done yet this fall. The contractor has not ruled it out, but the bids did come back really favorable. We were about 15% under the estimate, so that's another, um, good thing for the township budget. That means we've got a little extra in there to cover if there's some contingencies and things like that, so. Uh, stay tuned. If we do start any work, I will let the township know as soon as possible. Right now, I'm not gonna say it's unlikely. You never know. They could call tomorrow and say, hey, we wanna get in there and get started, so. Um, the major paving work will be next year, though. We may get some sidewalk and some things done outside the curbs and get some prep work done, but next year will be the final road paving and all the final cleanup items on that. Um, then we'll be working obviously with your road committee on local road projects for next year. Uh, you should anticipate the same amount of cost share, if not a little bit more, next year. Typically, uh, if we see an increase to our MTF budget, we will also increase, um, the township share. That will go to my board in December, once we get all those numbers, but typically that's what we see, so that's why you'll see a slight uptick each year in your, in your cost share. This year, I wanna say it was around 112, 115 range, so usually you'll see it increase a couple thousand each year. Um, one thing that we're doing different next year than in my, um, time here has not been done, and I'm not sure if it's ever been done. We put in for a countywide safety, uh, grant to study safety on our roads in the entire county. Um, the three big players are obviously Bath Township, Duett Township, Watertown, the three urban areas. But we included the city of St. John's, all the other municipalities in the county, plus all the townships where we have a consultant that is going to, if we get this grant, is going to take a look at our entire county and evaluate safety. And a big driver of this was a tragic accident that happened down in La Cuesta this spring. We looked at what can we do to capture some federal, state grant funding to truly try to look at safety on our roads in the county, so. Stay tuned on that. If we get selected, uh, the first part will just be conducting the study. Once the studies are completed, then we can actually take that information and apply for direct safety-type grant funding. Um, and it's, uh, it helps us be more competitive to have the study done first, so we'll stay tuned to that. M-dot work, uh, in the county. I believe they're pretty much finished up on the patching work out on I-69. They still are working on that 127 corridor through, uh, Trowbridge Road. They're gonna have half of that done this year and they're gonna continue working on the other half next year, so. No real relief in sight for that, unfortunately, but it's gonna be great when it's all said and done. Uh, the Park Lake Road crosswalks, uh, the symbols did get done, I believe, last week. And there's a little bit more we can do in there, um, in the spring if we wanna decide to put up some extra, um, little lane marking signs in the roadway to try to deter traffic. We can look at that, but the symbols have been painted. That work is all complete. Um, our Chandler Road, um, large project, that's gonna be, um, that's still in the design phase right now. We're working with Eagle currently to try to get the feasibility of enclosing the county drain that's alongside of it. That has been quite a major undertaking so far. They haven't ruled it out 100%, but there's a lot of environmental impacts that go along with that. Our goal is to have a three-lane section through there when we're all said and done from Coleman Road all the way through. And in order to do that, we really need to enclose that drain and push the road over into the drain, so. There's also a lot of sanitary sewer upgrade work that's included in that, so, um, we're continuing to work through that. This year's, uh, chloride, if you haven't looked at some of your roads chloride-wise, this year Consumers Energy paid for the chloride, um, in all of Bath Township. We used a lot better chloride. It's a 38%. Uh, we've noticed a really, um, good, um, result of using that chloride in the county. We got very few calls, very few complaints. So just something to look at. We're gonna kind of monitor it, you know. I think that residual will hold in the soil longer and maybe get us through, so next year we're planning on going back to our traditional method, but maybe it's something we wanna look at every two to three years. Uh, and we can kind of watch that in the township and advise you if you think that's a good idea, because this year we really saw a drastic improvement in our chloride out there. And then again, um, we'll be just getting you guys, uh, information on roads as early as possible. Last year, we got ahead of it and got everything in early, and we saw a great, um, benefit to getting that this year. We were, we're done with our gravel projects, um, already for the year. We're done with paving. We're, we're wrapping up early, which is a great thing, so. It gives us time to plan and move on to, um, other things that we can do for planning for the next year, so. With that, I'll, uh, open up to any questions you have for the Road Commission. If there aren't any, we can.
I have a couple.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, who is the grant through that you applied for, for the safety?
Oh. Good question. Right now, we're working with, um, WSP. I believe it's a statewide grant. I can get you the actual name of the, of the, um, of the funding. It's, it's state safety funds, but I can get you the actual program name. There's an acronym and I can't remember what it is right now.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
I can send that over to Karen.
Thank you. And why did, uh, consumers pay for the spraying this year?
So Consumers Energy with their pipeline project, uh, we actually reached out to them and said, you're gonna be causing a huge increase to traffic volumes on all these roads. And we were more concerned about the gravel versus the paved roads because we knew that's where all the complaints were gonna be, so. They actually paid for the chloride on both, not Bath, um, Victor and Ovind Township this year.
That's great. Thanks for advocating for us on that. Other questions, Jen?
No question. I just have a comment. Doug, I'd like to express my kudos. I hope you share it with, uh, your workers out there on the Hunter Road project.
Sure.
Um, real minimal in terms of, uh, effect of traffic through there and homeowners, including, uh, putting in the new crossover tube for the drain.
Sure.
Um, did a good job. They, uh, used some particular TLC, I would say, with adjacent property owners, of which I was one, so. I just wish to express my gratitude on that.
Thank you. I'll definitely do that. We try our hardest to make sure everything goes off seamless. That's our goal, and so that's great to hear.
I just interject something real quick, too. Uh, so Kevin Hall is one of the three Road Commissioners along with Mike Frederick.
Kevin, would you mind going up?
Sure.
No one on camera can see you, and you've got such a, you've got a face made for a camera, so.
That's very kind. Um, so one of the three commissioners, Gail Watkins and Mike Frederick. Right. Uh, we have the pleasure of working, uh, with Doug and his team. They do a great job. I think they're a good resource for all the townships, so. Interact with them, use them, right? They're, that's what they're there for. But Doug also didn't really, uh, sometimes he doesn't, I think, give full credit to himself and what they do. One of the things I noticed he didn't talk about is that they're doing a proactive study on culverts in the whole county. Uh, we're seeing, Doug's seeing, huge problems there. Culverts are failing. They're having to be replaced. They're very expensive, so. By doing that study, get it to the townships, you guys can start planning for that kind of stuff. Um, he hit, he hit on it, but getting contracts in early is terrific. It makes everybody's job easier. These guys can negotiate better prices, make sure that we're front of the line. I've had, I've been on the board now for seven years, I think, and we've had plenty of years where if you want that third course of gravel, you're fighting for it to get it, you know, in November or something like that, right? So anytime you can get that on better, quicker, is always great. And then the other thing, as you mentioned, Chandler Road, that's a lot of, uh, political maneuvering, you know? That's a, that's earmark money that doesn't come out of the township, so to speak, right? Um, and again, Doug and Gail and Mike, tremendous job of, of getting in there and kind of fighting for those funds, so. Again, doesn't do a great job of publicizing that, but they're doing a really good job there, so, uh, it makes our job easy. We appreciate it, so. And thanks for having us.
Thank you. That's a really helpful context. Any other questions from the group?
All right, well, I just wanna also thank, you know, Karen and her staff are fantastic to work with. We have a great relationship and, um, there'll be more to come on that culvert inventory. As we get it built, I'll share that with the townships. That's the only reason I didn't mention it, but, um, uh, yeah, it's, it's a pleasure to work with, uh, everybody here and I look forward to, uh, being here again next year, so. Seems like the time doesn't go fast, but it'll be a blink and we'll be back here, so. Anything in, anything in between Karen, Miles, you know how to get ahold of us. You can reach out anytime. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, our county commissioner, Commissioner Washington.
Good evening, uh, trustees, Dwight Washington, uh, Park Lake Road, and, uh, I really don't have much to announce this week. The county is busy planning for the elections and, um, dealing with our budget. The budget hearing is tomorrow, so if there's anybody who wants to make comment on it, uh, 6 o'clock tomorrow at the court offices. Um, and with the, other than that, we're kind of in a lame duck session as we like wait for the election results and the year to come to an end. And the last thing I'd add is that, um, again, this is fundraising season for our agencies that are helping people, and if you're interested, on November 16th, um, Chipotle will be matching funds for anybody who does purchase food from them. And then on the, uh, November 7th, Red Robin will be giving 20% of their sales to the, um, housing services for Mid Michigan, which is one of the big issues facing our community. Other than that, any questions, um?
What location for the Chipotle?
Um, the Chipotle, Chipotle? Chipotle Restaurant?
Yeah, which location is doing that?
Is there a specific one?
Usually there is.
West Saginaw Highway.
Okay.
Right, 5 to 9.
What are those funds for?
And those funds will go to housing services to Mid Michigan.
And you said November 7th is Red Robin?
And November 7th is Red Robin, yes.
Was the budget meeting 6 or 6:30 tomorrow?
Um, 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock, thank you.
Is the, uh, proposed budget available online?
Proposed, veil, uh, budget is available online. Last time I was here, I brought a copy of it, and, uh, so the township is aware of what's, uh, on the budget right now, but it, there is copy online.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. I know it was a tough evening, a long evening, and appreciate your oversight. Thank you.
Thanks, Dwight, thanks.
Anybody else, Karen, that you were expecting today? Uh, that brings us to the consent agenda. We have minutes of three of our committees. How would you all like to handle that?
I'll move to receive and place on file.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is that fair to? Uh, in a second, there's no discussion, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up is approval of minutes. We have our minutes from our Board of Trustees meeting September 16th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 16th, 2024 meeting.
I'll support it.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion or comment about the minutes? All right, hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. That brings us to our approval of vouchers tonight. How would you like to handle that?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers they submitted.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second for vouchers. Any discussion, questions, comments? All right, I think we'll do a roll call vote.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Fields Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you. And it is, drumroll please, time for our quarterly treasurer.
It's in there.
I'm trying to like hype you up here.
Well, we've made lots of interest, um, but don't, um, plan on that for next year. The feds already reduced the fed rate by a half a percent and it's planning to go at least another half a percent. So interest rates are going down on CDs and investments where it will be good for homeowners. If they're gonna buy a house, their mortgage rates will go down, though.
Too little, too late.
Huh?
Too little, too late.
I know.
I have, uh, a question.
Okay.
I noticed the Huntington Securities.
Those are our T-bills, so they get, they were renewed and then renewed again.
Okay.
So that's why.
It went down a bit?
Yep, yep. Because they got renewed September 26th.
Got it.
So, yep.
And then pointing out to folks that, uh, are interested in the DDA funds, they're listed on this as well, right? And we've got, if I read this right, 47, just over 47,000?
Correct.
I know people have been interested in those funds.
It's been spent on the sidewalk, um, down Main Street, most of it.
And some on the taxes on that property?
And we paid taxes, a couple hundred, and then we did a couple donations to the museum for the, what was that? Haven.
It's for the architectural.
Yeah, architectural.
Architectural drawings.
Something.
Yeah.
The digging.
Work on painting the hoopla.
Like a partial dig?
There's the architectural survey.
Yeah, that, yeah. So that's what we spent those funds on.
Archaeological survey.
There you go. I knew it was something.
All right, other questions or thoughts for the treasurer? For those of us who were looking at the budget in the last meeting, uh, we saw that the actual numbers coming in for fiscal year '24 as, uh, the treasurer mentioned are looking really, really good, so that's helpful. All right, if there's no other questions to the treasurer, we'll move on. Your next, uh, report will be what, December?
In January.
January, okay. Number 11 is committee appointments. We have none. Item 12 is township committee reports. We now have added, uh, letter A, a letter from the Senior Services Advisory Board. Are you distributing it, Sheri?
I didn't make copies.
Okay.
I can read it. We can copy if you want it.
Let's get copies of it.
This was written nicely by Deb Johnson for us, the senior center. She said, uh, this is regarding funds and expansion, et cetera. So this is, uh, to the Bath Charter Township Board of Trustees. The Senior Services Advisory Board has considered recent discussions by members of the Board of Trustees and administration as to the appropriate use of funds raised for the expansion of the senior center. As the planners, the SSAB has taken this opportunity to look back over the records from the fundraising events generating the money, concerts and whatever we, they had. Many hours were spent creating, organizing, and executing these fundraising events. We have reviewed statements in the advertisements, as well as the memories of those involved, to clearly determine the intent of these fundraisers and thereby the intended use of these funds. After much discussion, the SSAB unanimously agreed that those funds were always meant to be specifically used toward the extension and addition of the senior center. This expansion was always meant to provide more space for seniors, the people and patrons using the space, to have greater access to meals, activities, and events. We are certain that those who donated believed their money would be used in this specific way. Our superintendent, as Hildebrand, has stated that she disputes the existence of days when insufficient seating occurs. Her beliefs directly contradict the experiences of those attending the senior center for meals. I'll have to say I have seen it a number of times. Uh, the beliefs contradict the experience of those attending the meals. We have been told that our superintendent plans to use the designated funds to expand the kitchen's footprint by adding exterior food storage. Although this would provide more usable space for the kitchen staff, it would not satisfy the stated intent nor the spirit of the intent for these funds. We believe that this is an attempt to justify a change from the original purpose. Although the township does have the legal say in the final use of these funds, we ask that your decision be made with integrity. Without the SSAB, this money would not exist. It is our hope that the money will be used for the advertised reason and that you will honor the original intentions of all those people who both contributed money and worked so hard to raise it. Respectfully submitted, Senior Services Advisory Board. And that was a 100% agreement of the people there that put their time and effort into it. I apologize I didn't put it on the agenda.
All right. Thanks for that, Sheri.
You're welcome.
That brings us to item number 13, unfinished business. We have none, which brings us to item 14, new business. Uh, we have four items of new business under items for introduction and discussion. The first is Mallory Building Special Use Permit by the planner. Don't go anywhere. You're up, yeah.
You're up, Miles. He's like, where am I going?
All right, well, as it was stated, uh, it was recently had the planning commission and recommended to come up to the board for the, uh, approval of a special use permit with, uh, land use of a industrial, commercial warehouse. The warehouse that's being proposed is just over 6,000 square feet. Uh, what's going on on the site is Mallory Building, as I'm sure most of you guys are aware, established kind of a new headquarters down Ward M78, which is the big building that says Mallory on it. Um, they had, previously to that, operated out of their property on the Coleman Road site, which has a warehouse in the rear, which is about 7,000 square feet, and there's a home in the front, a single-family home, that they converted into an office. The single-family home has just not been invested in over time and it's getting quite old housing stock. And the amount of money that they feel would take to retrofit it for some other use to them doesn't seem worth it. They are seeking to de-mill that house and establish the secondary warehouse. Uh, Mallory Building stated that business has been quite well. I guess they've been quite busy, contracts all over the state, and they just need more room to store things like windows, doors, uh, flashing, so just kind of industrial building supplies. In terms of kind of the feedback we were getting from the agencies on this one, I mean, this is basically a large commercial pull bar, essentially, almost. They will have a foundation to this building. So there wasn't too much pushback or really any pushback at all from the agencies. There was a little bit of concern from the Drain Commission, just with the build-out in that area. They, there's no engineer-drained system in that area of the township. After, uh, some discussion with the township engineer, uh, that concern was largely believed because the soil type in that area is mostly very sandy, so it's just got great natural drainage. So the impact of. So the impact of the build-out in that area and the consequential runoff didn't really meet the engineers' bar of concern. There has been more water, if you notice. It's been an incredibly wet summer. I don't know if you guys have driven around the township post-rain event, or post-several rain events. But the ditch on Old M seventy-eight, which is controlled, operated, maintained by MDOT, has seen more water collection in it, but on the Coleman Road side of that area, no issues with water collection. Nonetheless, we did speak with them and relayed the Drain Commission's concern and they did make adjustments in their plan to retain more water on-site and send less out. So, in my mind, I'm not concerned about it. Yeah, that's pretty much it. Any questions?
It looks like the building, if I understand it right, it's right on the back edge of the lot line?
No, that's the building that's currently there.
And they're gonna tear that one down, you're saying?
Yeah, so.
No, they're tearing down the house that's in the front. This is already there. What they're proposing is a pole barn up front.
It's right on the line. There's no.
The current building is right on that back of the property line, right?
The current warehouse is on the back of the property. The proposed warehouse would actually be in front of that and it will be set back fifty feet, fifty feet from the front lot line.
So they're gonna basically demo the house?
It's hard to see in the satellite image. I tried to zoom out a little bit so I could see where the streets were.
Put in where this house is, they're gonna take that up.
And apologies, I'm pure, no, I'm also showing you this on the screen right now.
That's existing, that one, that there. So however they got that so close to the line.
Yeah.
That's something that already happened.
Yeah, I'm assuming that warehouse has been there for a while, because that would not meet our current zoning standards.
That's not the new Mallory Warehouse?
The new one meets our current zoning standards, as all new structures have to meet our current zoning standards.
So there would be a new one, an old one, and a new new one?
Nope, just two warehouses. There's one existing, and then there's a home there right now, a single-family home that is the use of an office, that will come down, and a new warehouse is what's being proposed.
If you look at these two blind drawings.
So this will stay. This house will be demolished, and then the warehouse will be in front, on top where the house is.
On top of where the house is.
So basically, the warehouse will go right here.
This is a new one?
No, that's existing.
No, like new, as in like a few years ago?
No, that's over here, like down the road. Their Mallory Building is like.
Oh, I see, yeah, you're thinking, yeah, they have a completely different property, a completely different location. You can see that one from sixty-nine. It's not even on.
It's like almost to the end of Bath Township, isn't it?
Yeah, it's almost all the township.
That's what I was confused about.
Yep, sorry for the confusion.
Does that make sense to you, too, Al?
Yeah, I can see it now. I'm just surprised that they allowed something that close to the lot line.
Yeah, don't even get me started on some places in the township where structures are.
That's, that's.
I'll just say that I think surveying technology has come a long way.
Probably boards back in the nineteen seventies, you know those guys. The one thing that's in the site notes, it does indicate that that building was put there by a variance, so I don't think it was built without proper.
The house or the building?
The building, the back, the back shed.
Back shed was.
Looks like there was a variance.
That's good context.
Yeah.
And two thousand and seven. So whoever was here in two thousand and seven?
They brought it to the planning commission and they did a variance for it or something.
Yeah, they're playing the ZBIA.
Yep.
None of us. Either way, the proposed building meets our zoning standards, and that's important.
So then, next meeting, you'll be asking for us to approve?
Yeah, and it's probably worth mentioning, too, Mallory Building staff wanted to be here tonight. There was a last-minute time issue. They will be at the next meeting. If you guys have any questions for them, they'll be able to take your questions.
Great.
All right.
Thank you. Next up is item B, which is introduction of the purchase, consumption, or possession of alcoholic liquor by underage persons. Please Chief Smith.
So what you have for you, back in two thousand and fourteen, I think that was the last time our our mind on possession doubt ordinance was updated. And since that time, the legislature has changed the state law. And so this is Attorney Revor's revision of our township ordinance to mirror state law. Does it change that?
What were the big changes?
Well, if you should have the original from two thousand and fourteen, then you should have the
Strike over.
Strike-through ones, and then the revision.
Yeah, I do.
The biggest thing is they're basically kind of downgrading a lot of it. Originally, it was a misdemeanor. Now it's a civil infraction. It could be a misdemeanor if you violate probation, did you go to all these other things.
So is all of this set forth in state law and we're just codifying in our own ordinance? So our ability to mess with this is pretty limited?
Yeah.
Not really specific to this, but I guess a little bit in that direction. Have you seen any changes that are coming about in the state with lessening some of the penalties for marijuana? Not medical, but particularly recreational, or no?
Not recently. Now, a few years back, if you remember, two or three years ago, the legislature softened a lot of things that we could arrest for, that no longer you can arrest, you gotta issue a ticket. And normally, we'd be able to take people into custody. Now, there's gotta meet certain parameters, you know? If they resist or don't cooperate, et cetera, et cetera. Otherwise, we can simply issue a citation for a lot of that, but not necessarily marijuana.
I was just curious if they're starting to mirror each other a little bit, so, thank you.
Remember, it's a demo legislature. I have just like some random questions in here. It mentions an administrator of substance abuse services. Is that someone at the state level or someone here?
That'd probably be a question for Attorney Revor.
Okay.
He's our attorney for the township ordinance, so please, I'm pleased to be on the side.
All right. Before we vote on this, could you ask that question to him? Or Karen, could you ask that question to him?
I can, sure.
There's also a bunch of typos. Can I give those to somebody, too?
Absolutely. Because what you have is directly from Attorney Revor's office.
He needs a law clerk. So I noticed one of the things taken out was some sort of effect against the driver's license? So that's not a thing anymore?
Like I said, like two, three years ago, they softened a lot of everything.
This is like the third time you get in trouble, you still can't lose your license?
That's kind of what it says right there.
That's nuts.
What page are you on?
Page two thirty-four, whatever.
At the bottom of that new number three, the line that is stricken. It's the only place I could find anything about the driver's license, and it's taken out. Which seems crazy. And then item B under it, you can get thrown in jail for ninety-three days or a fine of a hundred dollars, and those things seem very different.
Extreme ninety-three days or a hundred bucks. I'll take the hundred bucks.
No kidding. Wow.
Those are state laws.
Fascinating.
So you don't lose your license.
You don't lose your license.
That's what it says.
Is that just minors or is that adults, too?
For MIP?
Yeah, it's minors. It's just minors. This is the ordinance.
Any other questions, Karen?
Good, you can dodge.
You want those edits to go to you or to Karen?
Either one. If you give them Karen, she'll afford them on, or I can afford them on either one.
You prefer to go to you?
I have no preference, whatever you're comfortable with.
And this is the only reason this came about, is because the state changed their. The answer, we don't write, can't remember the last time we wrote an MIP.
Really?
Oh, that was gonna be my question.
That seems like good news.
Is that just because there's less MIPs, or you're just writing less MIPs?
They're not getting caught, I'm not sure.
Okay.
You can test it, you're here. That you had it six months ago.
Thank you, Chief. That brings us to item C. Is Sandra McIntosh here? Hi, Sandra. This is the Bath Summer Festival topic, and there's a letter from Chair Montre of the Rec Committee in our packet. Take it away.
Do you want me, he said that you guys are gonna read his email, unless you want me to read it?
I don't need it read to me. Does anybody need that, Rad? It's in the packet for folks at home that can read it?
Okay. So to kind of sum up his emails, we wanted to, we, as in myself and a few other community members, would like to bring back the Summer Festival Bath Days of sorts. We wanted to bring back something to the community, because our community is kind of one of many that are the only ones that don't have anything, any time of the year, really. So we wanted to bring back Bath Days in a different way, but still bring back all of the regulars, the bathtub races, the fun events for the kids, craft vendors, that kind of sorts. And then, oh, I lost. This is Libby. She's a community member as well that wants to help bring this event back.
No, you absolutely should. I am here for support.
I guess what we're trying to ask from the township is to kind of be our backbone of it.
Yes, we're not asking for any help planning it or fundraising for us. We're not asking for that.
Not even really finances. We just want the backbone. So later on down the road, if we want to be able to walk away, we can. So we really don't feel comfortable getting the nonprofit in our names. Myself personally, I have two young kids. My oldest graduates in five years, so in five years, if I want to walk away from doing this event, I can without having a nonprofit in my name, having to figure out who to hand it off to. So that's kind of what we're coming to you guys for, is to get the support, I guess the legal support, is how you want to name it.
Have you guys gone to the previous Bath Days members? Because I was the president of that for nine years. I worked on it for nine years. That information's out there. If they're willing to give up leadership of it, that would be where you start, because they have all of those files.
We've contacted them. I personally have a few times with no response back. And I believe Adam has a few times as well.
Okay.
With little to no response.
Because I know I also had the Lions Club come in, and him and I sat down, and we talked about it because he thought that the Lions Club might want to try to do something, so make sure you put the Lions Club in your back pocket, too.
Okay.
Because they always serve the food. They did like breakfast and lunches in the park. But I'm a good resource if you guys need help.
Okay.
You don't have any of the records anymore?
No. When I resigned as the president, I handed all that off.
Yeah, we looked it up, I think, two years ago, year and a half ago.
We tried to start there.
Okay, I'll see if I can reach out.
We contacted them, and that's when, I mean, at first, it was, yeah, sure, let's talk, and then it was nothing.
Nothing, okay.
So that's why we wanted to come to you. That's why Adam, he suggested us to come to you to see if it would be something that you guys would be willing to kind of back us up with, so we can put something together for the community.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
So our previous superintendent continually told us that we were not able to sponsor festivals, so I asked Karen to follow up on that, because I don't, I don't not believe him, but I never understood why that was. So the short answer is that we do have municipalities that regularly support their own festivals. I think sometimes you gotta pay attention to the funding sources. It all depends on the funds they're using and the benefits that they're deriving. Some of the festivals are particularly authorized in state law, so I can tell you that I know some of them are, like for instance, Independence Day, there's a list of them for veterans. You certainly have statutory authorization to fund those. Typically, items such as like summer festivals, or items that would be like Bath Days, those would be getting more towards really the kind of implied power that it's a question for the township board if you're expending funds on something that provides for your general welfare of your residents. That can be promoting potentially the downtown, that can be providing community well-being, et cetera. So we're not gonna take a position that there's a hard line in the sand, that you can't support or fund festivals. And in fact, some municipalities, and they've actually indicated from a financing perspective, that I think they're saying that they would handle it. So I don't, this question may be moot, but we've even provided through invoicing or service contracts, contributing to like through chambers or through other sort of organizations that are saying, hey, we're gonna do restaurant tasting, or we're gonna provide some type of downtown event. We know it's gonna benefit the local community. And then we have the actual municipality find a way to sort of assist or collaborate in contributing whatever it is, twenty-five hundred or five thousand dollars, understanding that the responses, marketing, downtown engagement for the residents, a whole host of stuff. So I think it, I'm not sure exactly where the money piece fits in. I think even if you were to use the township sort of, as is suggested in their proposal, really logistics, which I would assume would be your corporate entity, your insurance, your governmental immunity, there's probably some administrative costs, I think, at the board level. So you would be sort of expending tax dollars for what would otherwise be allocated resources. I certainly think that you could do so. My experience in doing it in municipalities with roughly your population is that they have dedicated committees. The people who are on those committees live and breathe these events. They work on these things for twelve months to get them to happen, and they're out there contributing an extensive amount of time and energy. And eventually, typically, even if it were not to happen with sort of the township being the logistical vehicle, I would assume that eventually something would come before you, because they're gonna have to probably work with the chief on road closures. They're gonna have to figure out safety. There are other pieces that are all gonna have to come before you. So either way, you're gonna probably be involved, even if the township wasn't sort of the logistical vehicle. There are communities that do the logistical piece, and then there are communities who say, look, if there's a certain group, like it sounds like there already is a group that wants to contribute or do this, we'll offer some level of service, whatever that might be. We used to do the insurance, didn't we?
No.
No?
Bath Days have their own insurance for everything.
What was it you guys asked us for?
For the fireworks permit. I even went to Clint County Road Commission for my permits to close the roads.
Oh, but to use the park?
To park, yeah, for the parks, yeah.
Are you thinking you'd want us to be the fiscal agent?
Are you going to go out and get sponsors? That's what we used to do. Okay. So you guys will fundraise that way. You'll go ask the local businesses for sponsorships and things like that. That's how we did it, so, yeah. I know, we're talking fine.
But are you envisioning like having a bank account to put that in? Or are you asking to put it in our bank account to use?
We would feel more comfortable if we used you guys.
Okay.
That way, it's not put back on us as just volunteers. Like I said, I mean, if something happens and we need to walk away for whatever reason, then we can. We don't want to be stuck with a bank account, trying to figure out, like right now, like with Bath Days still being a nonprofit.
They have an account somewhere, I'm sure.
They have an account somewhere, and they don't want to hand it over or get rid of it or anything like that, from what I know of.
This way, if something did happen, then years down the road, if somebody else wanted to start it back up again, if, you know, then they could just come to the township, and you could be like, okay, here's the account, instead of.
I was trying to figure out how to hand over such and such amount.
The other one that I've seen from practical experience has been, you know, Rotary, J.C.'s, Lions, like all of your typical civic organizations in different communities can definitely, and then you sort of have that legacy issue fixed if you have a.
Well, that's a comment. I said the Lions have come to me personally, sat in my office, and we've talked about what I did. And I thought they were gonna try to start it up.
They're a real small group now.
I know they are a small group, but if they have these lovely ladies to help them.
And we have all of the, to just reassure everybody, we do have a list of potential sponsors, and we started within the community Bath Township, and then kind of worked over. And we started within the community Bath Township, and then kind of worked over it out as well. So, we're not gonna forget about or oversee somebody that's already got a business in the community. We definitely want them to all be acknowledged and up front and center when it comes to sponsorships.
Is the Recreation Advisory Committee gonna do anything? I don't know. How is the Recreation Advisory Committee roped in to this? Other than Adam being the connection between the two?
He spoke with the board, and they are all saying yes, but not... I don't think they officially, like, actually voted yes on it. But they all agree with bringing this back.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't even have their website up anymore. They used to have a website and a Facebook page that we maintained, and none of it's out there.
Things fall apart when you leave.
I left in, what, eighteen or nineteen, so...
So, it sounds like we may need to take this up in a more formal way as a vote, to serve as sort of like the legal and fiduciary agent of this.
Yeah, so the... I just think in listening, the one thing that would be helpful is to have a little bit more clarity on what particularly is being asked of the township. For instance, I've seen it play out a couple ways. One, if it's true that there are no sort of nonprofits or other civic organizations that want to be involved. If there are, then the conversation at the board would be, are we willing to commit staff to that committee that includes that nonprofit? Will we assist as it relates to safety services, park use, et cetera, right? That's a different question than the formal question, unless you want to answer that threshold question, and maybe you know the answer. But is... If the question is, we're gonna use the township's entity for purposes of our insurance, our ability to accept funds, deposit them in a bank account that's restricted, expending those funds back out. So, then we're expending sort of township resources at a staff level, plus exposure as to liability, plus legal issues, insurance, like... So, one of them is gonna require you to track, like, you'd want to contact the insurance carrier. You'd want to understand a whole... You'd want to... You'd want to contact your auditor, because sometimes what they say is not consistent with what we say. So, are they comfortable with those funds coming in? Are they on the same page with them being restricted? How is that gonna... So, there's some due diligence to be done, depending on exactly what's being asked. If they already know that, and their ask is this question only, which is, will the township be in this role? Then I think, yeah, you probably need to defer to a later meeting, because we probably have some due diligence to do to get you some answers on some of the sort of risk analysis that I'm currently thinking of.
Yeah, I mean, I imagine you two don't exactly know what to ask us. Is that fair to say?
That what he just mentioned and listed off is kind of what we're...
The second piece, not the first piece.
Correct.
I'm not sure that there are a lot of nonprofits or groups that could even take it on, other than the Lions, and they're not very big.
But I know that even the gentleman that runs like the car show down there, he even came in and we talked, because he thought about that, because the car show was always part of Bath Days, too.
But that... They didn't start a nonprofit for that, did they?
No. Yeah. Mr. Fluehling? Okay.
I wonder, could... Jen, would you mind helping them understand what to ask for in a formal ask?
I guess.
Yeah.
You just offered your support, and you said you're an expert.
I'm not an expert.
I'm picking you up on your offer.
Yes, sir.
So, could you get with the treasurer, and then we'll have a more formal ask from you, which will allow our staff and attorneys to take a peek?
Yeah.
I don't hear anybody saying like they hate this idea. I think everyone has sort of voiced that they hate that we don't have something.
Yeah, and we have a Parks and Rec's board, you know? Hopefully, they'll take a part in it. Because Adam sent this, so, yeah.
Yeah. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm gonna try to get that stuff.
They bring it up on Facebook all the time.
They do. They do. But they don't realize that the last three years I was there, it was me.
Yeah. That's why we haven't mentioned a whole lot of anything on social media, just because we didn't...
I was a stay-at-home mom.
I think that's very...
That was my life.
Crazy.
So, just so you know. It's hard to get volunteers to do it and commit to it.
And Judy has run...
Summer socialists.
Community-wide events as well, and I'm sure has lots of advice for you as well.
Yeah.
Jack, did you have something?
I was just curious. Chris, is there any potential for any legal entanglements by opening up 501(c)(3) and the naming convention? Because if one already exists, and they want to name another 501(c)(3) with the same name, I just can see some...
So, the naming piece will be different, right? So, you can record the 501(c)(3) name at the state. You can always do a DBA at the counting level. The question becomes whether or not the... And I don't know the name of the current nonprofit, so if it's not actually called Bath Days, but...
It is.
It is, yeah.
I think it's just Bath Days.
Bath Days.
Okay, so the real question then will be whether they believe that they have any intellectual property rights to both the name and the ability to then offer marketed festival services. And maybe they've got trademarks or copyrights. Those are issues that would have to be figured out.
But they gotta answer the phone if they want to say they do.
Well, and part of it is, I mean, hopefully, the current board that's listed through LARA would just have one meeting and just reappoint people, and then we would just be able to do that.
Do you know the corporate records are in good standing, or maybe you don't know how to do it?
As of two years ago, maybe, I think. It was like, it was about two years ago.
We could look, too, and see. They gotta file annual...
Yeah, they might not have even filed them.
If they haven't, then we can take the name, so... Because the website's gone, the Facebook page is null and void, so I just think they just let it go.
Now, the township wouldn't need to do that, though. We wouldn't, as a municipal entity, we would... Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Do you know where the records are?
I was more for them, so they don't get...
Get the car together.
Did you... What did you say to that? I didn't hear your response.
I said, I probably know where the records are, down the road. In boxes, unless they burnt them and gotten rid of them. But I have a lot of them just on computer.
Floppy disk.
Floppy disk.
Not floppy. They were floppies back then. Not that old. Not him, but...
Does that give you some direction?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for taking leadership and stepping up. This is what it takes to get this stuff done. Well, we look forward to your formal ask.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, ladies.
All right, that brings us to the last item under new business, meeting schedule.
Thank you. The Deputy Superintendent put this together on our behalf. In the past, we have gone out and asked the boards, committees, commissions if this schedule works for them. Should we proceed in doing that as well before we bring it back for a vote?
That's what I would prefer, unless they're not meeting, and then I think you could pinch-hit.
Okay.
I always thought it would be nice if the committees identified these asterisk dates that they know they were gonna cancel and just do that up front rather than on the backside.
The Planning Commission generally does that, so I would anticipate they'll do that again. And of course, some of them are only as needed.
Great.
Thank you. We'll proceed with doing that.
And any other thoughts on that, that's not my way or the highway?
Yeah, if there are, you can email the Deputy Superintendent or myself, and we'd be happy to work through those questions.
Do you know, and I think Judy Skedaddle, do you know why the Senior Center Advisory or Senior Services Advisory Board meets at one instead of in the evening like everybody else?
Because at lunch.
They do it right after lunch.
After lunch.
You guys meet after lunch. People might be able to participate more if it's during the workday. But that's yours to deal with, not...
Thanks.
Just a suggestion. It makes it hard for me, I know, to get to the meetings one o'clock on a hot workday.
I'll bring it up.
All right, so that brings us to Items for Action. There are none. And then that brings us to Item fifteen, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. You'll know under the Superintendent's Report that we have the next special meeting for the budget review scheduled before the regular board meeting on October 21st, 2024, at five o'clock. Regular meeting to follow at six. If for some reason you will not be able to attend, please let the clerk know, or the supervisor, or any of us know that you can't make that. And a reminder that we are canceling... You canceled it with an action earlier in the year, the Board of Trustees' meeting for November 4th, 2024, as it is the night before the election. And there's much to be done around here in those instances. In addition, in addition to the board work, there has been a great deal of work that's been occurring. Thank you for coming. Including the security system upgrades, which are in their finality. And there's been election work going on as well. I'll let the clerk speak to that, but there have been a number of ballots, many thousands, that have left this building. And a lot of people have been working hard to make that happen. And I don't have anything else prepared, but if you have any questions, I would be willing to answer them. Okay, we have several action items from tonight, so we will follow through with those and bring information back and email anything that might be needed in the meantime.
And you had met with our typical attorney and had some stuff that we're gonna do in the future, too, that we've parked over the course of the last year.
Yes, that is correct. I do think that Chris Patterson has some updates that he could provide to you tonight.
Happy to. Couple of things that we're... That we've been working on, one is Park Lake Road. So, we got the... There's actually two cases now. So, in the first case that was started, that was to get specific performance on the purchase agreement. So, that was to ensure that the contract was complied with and the transfer was complete. Once that was recorded, though, since it was not a standard transaction where you sort of sit down and figure out, like, these are taxes paid, this is mortgage paid. We had to then create a second case, which is provided by state law, where we interplead. We basically would say, here, court, here's all the funds. You figure out what to do with them. In the process of doing... And we already had a closing statement, so we sort of knew who obviously were interested parties. In the process of sort of filing the second case and getting ready to dump the money into the court, it's gotten a little bit more convenient, because now everybody... The individual who was involved in the first case has gotten legal counsel. And so, that has assisted in sort of everybody now realizing that that transaction's complete. They've gone and removed their personal property. There's a longer discussion to have happen about the state of the property itself, but given our intentions, we'll move on. And I think as it relates to the interpleater, we've started to then stipulate and get the funds moved. So, we just completed... There was a motion filed by the mortgage company related to their money. They wanted to make sure they were paid. We now completed a stipulation to get them paid, and a release of lien filed. That's gonna get filed in both cases. And then I think my colleague who's working with me, Dave, has actually emailed the treasurer, because we've been wanting to make sure we get the money filed on time. We think we might even be able to stipulate out now with the individual who's represented to even get her funds out of the interpleater. We've paid the real estate agent that was involved on behalf of the township. So, I think we may basically not even have to completely sort of put any money in the court if we can get the money appropriately handled. We need some direction from the judge, because the judge needs to agree that these stipulations appropriately sort of resolve what's an allocation of approximately eighty-seven some thousand dollars. So, it's coming to a close. There's still obviously some legal work to be done, but it's nice that we've got less sort of conflict, and we're working towards stipulated resolutions, which should sort of hopefully avoid any potential collateral litigation. Other update? Any other questions on that case? Okay.
You better use that property for something great.
In addition, Ms. Mills and I, also legal counselors with the township, have been working through a list, a long list of things that have been started by this body, and that need to either come back for discussion or decision-making. So, things such as the board rules of order and some policies, such as the flag policy that we started earlier this year, will all come back to you for further discussion and decision-making.
Great. Questions, comments, thoughts for the Superintendent?
Where are we at in the personnel policy?
I have reviewed the personnel policy. I think we need to check. There are some labor laws and standards that have changed recently. We need to make sure that we're complying with those changes, and then I think that it'll be able to come to this board.
How long do you think that'll take? Because some of that stuff will affect the retirement stuff that we're talking about.
I think that it can be moved forward, knowing that we have... May have to make some amendments to that document based on any decisions that we might make in regards to MERS or other things, but I think we can begin moving it forward relatively soon.
I was just laughing, because relative is a relative term.
Can you remind me of the timeline in terms of the election? I mean, we only have one more meeting, this board, before the election. And then if there were a change, is there another meeting before?
Yes.
The eighteenth, I believe.
Okay. And then at the end of that month is when it changes.
The twentieth.
The twentieth.
Twentieth, okay.
So, the eighteenth is...
That's what I wasn't sure on, is that date.
So, you'll review the second half of the budget on the 21st, and then you will have the meeting on the 18th that you'll adopt the budget. And then if there are new board members, of course, they would take the oath on the 20th, and...
Okay.
And then our first meeting in December would be with the new board.
That bill in the legislature that would push it back to December 1st hasn't moved anywhere.
Nope.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, comments for the Superintendent?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. This brings us to number sixteen, Public Statement Two, limited to three minutes, but on any topic. Anybody in the audience like to address the board this evening? See, none?
He's not gonna look up.
Avoid eye contact.
You got a question?
He had questions.
You got a question?
How y'all doing? My name's Cameron. I just had a question about the Bath Days topic. I'm not really from around here, so I was just wondering, when was the last time that you guys had Bath Days in the Bath Township?
I believe it was 2019, before COVID hit in 2020.
And is that the reason why it got canceled?
I don't know. I left that board in 18, I think. So, I'm assuming they just didn't have the support to start it back up yet.
Yeah, I think getting somebody to take the lead on organizing has been difficult. So, then, once you throw COVID and all of that on top of it, I think it's sort of...
Yep.
Not gained any traction until now.
All right, thank you.
Is it safe for me to assume you're a journalism student?
Yeah. I'm a junior at Michigan State.
Okay.
Oh, wonderful.
Can you tell us your last name for your aim to appear in the minutes?
Last name, Candler, C.A.N.D.L.E.R. And my first name's spelled C.A.M.E.R.O.N.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
All right, thank you, Cameron. That brings us to Board Member Comments. Do you want to start with Kate today?
Always.
Be careful what you whisper.
Yeah, sit backward.
I guess. You gotta look away. Don't make eye contact. I don't think I have any comments this evening. I would, other than to encourage everybody to complete your ballots if you've gotten them at home, which I have, and I forgot to bring it tonight. So, try to remember to do that, or come in person and vote in a few weeks. That's it.
Thank you. Yeah?
I have nothing.
He's looking away.
To Kate's comment about coming in, don't forget, we have early voting. The nineties of early voting is right before the election. We vote over at Do It Township. We have all the information on the website, so if you can't find anything on the website and just want to call us and ask questions, we're here. We sent out a little over twenty-eight hundred permanent absentee voter ballots last week. They're coming in really fast. People's coming in and grabbing ballots. We're very busy in the front office. So, if you have any questions, just call.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
I have a new voter in my household now, so I've appreciated all the things that you've been sending. Hopefully, she votes for me. We'll see.
Chocolate, chocolate.
What did you bribe her with?
I also want to encourage people to get out and vote. And because of the election happening next month, and I guess really it's happening now, too, next month, the clerk has asked me to lead up the supervision of the Superintendent's Annual Review. If you recall, her contract says in... If you recall, her contract says in the last quarter of the year, we will do an annual review. So I plan to have that process to roll out to you all at the next meeting. Probably give you all a look see on that to give comments before we move into anything formal. But that will be coming and all of us will have an opportunity to participate in that process. That's it for me.
Thanks for volunteering me for Bath Days.
Volunteer yourself.
I, I will gladly give them any information that I can give them. And I will try to get the files from the current president, vice president, secretary and treasurer for them so they can use it.
Nothing. Nothing for me.
Bath Days would be great. That was a really neat community. I know much worse for you than everybody else, but it was fun. It was really a neat community thing to do. Our fire trucks fighting the cops and.
Watching the tubs go down Main Street.
Yeah, tubs racing with the kids. That was fun.
I agree.
Hope we can do it.
All right, thanks, team. We come together again in two weeks. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move, re-adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. We stand adjourned at 7:18, Kate. Oh, I heard.